Offered by Mr. Brady, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, enable us to draw upon the wisdom and experience of yesterday as we respond to the questions and concerns of tomorrow. Give us freedom to speak fully and boldly and with kindness. Give us patience to listen openly without prejudice. Give us confidence to discover and enjoy new possibilities. Give us wisdom to discern what is right, good, and just for the city of Sandusky. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Crusher, would you call the roll?
Mr. Poole?
Present.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Roddy?
Here. If you have the minutes of our meeting of March 11, 2019, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
I move that we accept the minutes of the March 11 meeting and dispense from the formal reading.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. The objection motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn now to a new tradition, City of Sandusky. Mr. Wolfser, please. Following the example set forth by the Fire Department, having our new officers sworn in at the Commission meeting, and I think it's a great tradition. Now, tonight, we are... Well, I'm just going to turn over to Mr. Wolfser.
Thank you, Commission President Murray, Commissioners. As Commissioner President Murray said, as a way to celebrate our ability to hire new folks at the safety forces, we have to do this part of the Commission in the community and the department's part of it. So tonight, we'll be swearing in Officer Nicholas Peters. So I will read the first part, and then I'll ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm going to break this into three clauses. So just before I stop, start and finish there. There. So, "On this date, you are here, my commission, as a peace officer to serve as a police officer for the city of Sandusky, Ohio pursuant to 737.02 of the Ohio Revised Code and 127.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of Sandusky. As such, you shall affirm the following." Please raise your right hand. "I, Nicholas Peters, do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America."
I, Nicholas Peters, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio and the laws and ordinances of the city of Sandusky, Ohio.
Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio and the laws and ordinances of the city of Sandusky, Ohio.
Which I am appointed, to the best of my ability, will discharge of your duty of this office.
To which I am appointed and, to the best of my ability, will discharge of your duties of this office.
Congratulations and welcome, boards. Stay safe.
His wife is going to pin his badge on Ford. Please. So Nick is a Sandusky High School graduate. He has been in Sandusky. His mother and I graduated together, were locker mates in school. But he served in the United States Marine Corps when he graduated for four years, and then returned to Sandusky. He's been living in Sandusky with his wife and two children. So we're excited to welcome a Sandusky kid aboard, in the Police Department. Thank you, and everyone that supported him today.
He's warning them to go as quickly as they can.
Why are you peeing?
You're walking to stay, most people.
It's not a motion day?
It's a motion. Turns out that it's true. Children and cops always fill the room. All right. We turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of our regular items of legislation, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. The question of the meeting is limited to three-minute comments.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I would like to make a comment on this zoning change for the parcels on First and Second The Planning Commission okayed that to be zoned commercial, but the city's going to break their own rule tonight and make it residential. They want to keep it residential. I don't understand. It's all mixed down there, residential and commercial, why they can't exist together. One developer wants to build on the north side of First Street, the other wants to build on the south side. And I don't understand why you can't allow both of these developers so we can benefit from their development. Thank you.
Please, Ms. Johnson. Who else? We will turn to a public hearing that Ms. Block has made to present. Block is our Community Development Manager, and this is the hearing regarding the fiscal year 2019 CDBG and 2019-23 Consolidated Plan and the 2019 One-Year Action Plan.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of Commission. This will be the first of two public hearings concerning the city's fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant, 2019 to 2023 Consolidated Plan, 2019 One-Year Action Plan, and an update to the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. The city is currently under contract with Wage Term Associates, Inc. of Detroit, Michigan, to act as the city's consultant for the coordination, administration, development, and implementation of the plans. As an entitlement, City Sandusky directly receives an allocation of funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development to carry out selected activities within our community. Under this grant, there are certain requirements which cannot be exceeded. In general, these include a maximum of 20% of the allocation to be expended on administrative and planning expenses, and a maximum of 15% of the allocation to be expended on public 70% of the funds must benefit low-to-moderate-income persons or households. All of the funds must meet one of three national objectives. These include low-to-moderate income benefit, elimination of slum and blight, and community urgent need. Sandusky anticipates an allocation of approximately $650,000 of new funds for program year 2019. The following activities were budgeted in the 2018 program year, which is currently underway. We funded program administration, $121,000; fair housing, $9,000; public facilities, $648,000; clearance and demolition, $100,000; code enforcement, $75,000; the Erie County Health Department 211 Program, $5,000; the Erie County Senior Center Meals on Wheels Program was $15,000; OGO-OGO Reach Program was also $15,000; and then the Volunteers of America, Greater Ohio Crossroads Emergency Shelter and Transitional Housing Program was $15,000. Subrecipient funding applications became available on February 15 and were due to the Community Development Department on March 15. A draft of the plan will be made available on April 5, after which there will be a 30-day comment period. The draft plan will be available for review at City Hall, as well as the Sandusky Library. There will be a second Consolidated Plan Advisory Committee meeting on April 5 as well. On April 22, there will be a second public hearing held at 5:00 PM during the Commission meeting. Public input on community needs relating to the CDBG funding can be submitted by written correspondence to the Community Development Department, emailed to me at a blanka@ci.sandusky.org, or by phone at 419-627-5847. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Block. This is a public hearing. Commissioners, if you have any questions or comments? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the issues that the block had discussed? If not, then the hearing is closed. Thank you. Commissioners, we have, as we usually do, a number of different pieces of communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. It's all in here to make a motion to accept those. It's a motion.
Second.
It's a motion and second discussion. An objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Mr. Crusher, would you... Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda that you'd like to have placed on the regular agenda? If not, then, Mr. Crusher, would you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is authorization to submit a grant to the Ohio Department of Public Safety or for the Sandusky Fire Department. Item B is authorization to purchase turnout here from Warren Fire Equipment for the Sandusky Fire Department. Item C are two separate ordinances, which are joint maintenance agreements with the city of Huron, and also with Margaret Chantip to service vehicles. And item D is approval for a change order with Republic Services, and it is a decrease.
Mr. Crusher, Commissioners, having read the consent agenda, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move that we accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions A through D, as drafted and presented to the City Commission, under the consent agenda, shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions A through D, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second. It's been a motion and second discussion. Crusher, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. And now on the ordinances and resolution, please.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. Resolutional ordinances are adopted. Item number one, please.
Yes, item one is a second reading of an ordinance disapproving the recommendation of the Planning Commission to amend the official zone map of the city of Sandusky to rezone seven parcels from R140, Single Family Residential District, to CR, Commercial Recreation District.
Thank you, Mr. Haber. Recently reminded me that it does not require a second motion when we're on a second reading. So, comments or questions or concerns?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
In the two weeks we've had since the last meeting, I had an opportunity to attend the special Planning Commission meeting, which they elaborated their reason for the decision to change the zoning to commercial recreation. Additionally, I talked to other people in the community, folks that were prospective homeowners, perhaps, likewise, real estate folks who sell property. I'm comfortable that the zoning commission's decision to change this to commercial recreation is probably appropriate, and represents the best chance for us to get decent development down there. I noted that I think that there is significant commercial recreation in that area, and the area over time is likely to benefit from this. So I hope that the other Commissioners have done some research and arrived at the conclusion that I did, so that we can support the Planning Commission's decision. Thanks.
Additional questions or comments? I haven't changed my view. To be clear, Mr. Poole, not to be clear, but not to be critical, the legislation will likely have a different outcome, given your change of stance, but that is, of course, your prerogative. Unless there are further comments, Mr. Crusher, would you poll the Commissioners on the legislation?
Mr. Poole?
No.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. That legislation fails, and what you've witnessed, folks, is a flaw in our ordinances. The notion that the duly-elected representatives of the city cannot by a vote of even five to two govern this particular zoning change, I think is an error. And, Mr. Haber, I appreciate it. In the coming months, you will present the Commission with some alternatives to consider in terms of how we might amend that legislation in light of what other communities do. I think we should add a baseline of what other communities do as well. Mr. Crusher, would you present item number two, please?
Item number two is a second reading of an ordinance making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2019, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington. I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the second reading.
Second.
After Mr. Haber just told me I didn't need to ask for a motion, I forgot. So you'll just have to keep... You know, eventually, I'll get it, Mr. Haber. So Commissioners, additional questions or comments on the budget? Mr. Crusher, would you poll the Commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Poole?
No.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item number three is a resolution accepting and approving the City of Sandusky Tax Incentive Review Council's recommendations regarding current taxation agreements, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed? Mr. Chairman. Ms. Waddington. I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Last go, just to, in summary, this is a continuation of the city's sustained effort to acquire property in the south side residential acquisition. I may not get the title quite right, but we have a sustained effort to acquire property in the south side area, where the idea of salting those parcels and... It's self-doing something more and better than what has been done there in the past. This is built, basically, a camp built in World War II to house the workers at the munitions factory at NASA, Plum Brook at the time. It's just a continuation of that effort.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the Commission, in the past, the properties that have been presented to the Commission were sort of pure acquisitions with purchase and sale agreements. This is the first one that we're bringing through ratification of a share-of-sale purchase. This property in particular was purchased for $15,000. There's an accompanying piece of legislation following this, in which we'll immediately turn around and seek approval to sell it to the Erie County Land Bank for $5,000, who will also utilize their state funding to move forward with the demolition of the property with the funds from the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. And just one other piece, which was missing from my legislature... Missing from my communication, which came out after the fact, there is a city-held mortgage on this property, so we'll also have an additional $6,500 approximately returned to the city, albeit in a different fund, that will also be coming back to the city once the deal is finalized.
Good deal. Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioners? Mr. Crusher, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Stain.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Stain.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Stain.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Item number four, please.
Item number four is an ordinance approving and ratifying the purchase of real property at the share-off sale located at 2027 East Forest Drive, and identified as parcel number 58-01273.000 for the purpose of blight elimination and demolition, authorizing and directing the city manager and the compliance director to expend funds for the purchase of the real property, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter. Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Last go, just to, in summary, this is a continuation of the city's sustained effort to acquire property in the south side residential acquisition. I may not get the title quite right, but we have a sustained effort to acquire property in the south side area, where the idea of salting those parcels and... It's self-doing something more and better than what has been done there in the past. This is built, basically, a camp built in World War II to house the workers at the munitions factory at NASA, Plum Brook at the time. It's just a continuation of that effort.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the Commission, in the past, the properties that have been presented to the Commission were sort of pure acquisitions with purchase and sale agreements. This is the first one that we're bringing through ratification of a share-of-sale purchase. This property in particular was purchased for $15,000. There's an accompanying piece of legislation following this, in which we'll immediately turn around and seek approval to sell it to the Erie County Land Bank for $5,000, who will also utilize their state funding to move forward with the demolition of the property with the funds from the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. And just one other piece, which was missing from my legislature... Missing from my communication, which came out after the fact, there is a city-held mortgage on this property, so we'll also have an additional $6,500 approximately returned to the city, albeit in a different fund, that will also be coming back to the city once the deal is finalized.
Good deal. Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioners? Mr. Crusher, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. And ordinance adopted. Item number five, please.
Yes, item five is an ordinance declaring that certain real property owned by the city located at 2027 East Forest Drive, and identified as parcel number 58-01273.000, is no longer needed for any municipal purpose, and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement to sell the designated real property to the Erie County Land Rehabilitation Corporation for the purpose of blight elimination and demolition, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Crusher, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. And now on the resolution?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Stain.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Item number four, please.
Item number four is an ordinance approving and ratifying the purchase of real property at the share-off sale located at 2027 East Forest Drive, and identified as parcel number 58-01273.000 for the purpose of blight elimination and demolition, authorizing and directing the city manager and the compliance director to expend funds for the purchase of the real property, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter. Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Last go, just to, in summary, this is a continuation of the city's sustained effort to acquire property in the south side residential acquisition. I may not get the title quite right, but we have a sustained effort to acquire property in the south side area, where the idea of salting those parcels and... It's self-doing something more and better than what has been done there in the past. This is built, basically, a camp built in World War II to house the workers at the munitions factory at NASA, Plum Brook at the time. It's just a continuation of that effort.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the Commission, in the past, the properties that have been presented to the Commission were sort of pure acquisitions with purchase and sale agreements. This is the first one that we're bringing through ratification of a share-of-sale purchase. This property in particular was purchased for $15,000. There's an accompanying piece of legislation following this, in which we'll immediately turn around and seek approval to sell it to the Erie County Land Bank for $5,000, who will also utilize their state funding to move forward with the demolition of the property with the funds from the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. And just one other piece, which was missing from my legislature... Missing from my communication, which came out after the fact, there is a city-held mortgage on this property, so we'll also have an additional $6,500 approximately returned to the city, albeit in a different fund, that will also be coming back to the city once the deal is finalized.
Good deal. Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioners? Mr. Crusher, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. And ordinance adopted. Item number five, please.
Yes, item five is an ordinance declaring that certain real property owned by the city located at 2027 East Forest Drive, and identified as parcel number 58-01273.000, is no longer needed for any municipal purpose, and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement to sell the designated real property to the Erie County Land Rehabilitation Corporation for the purpose of blight elimination and demolition, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
There has to be, there has to be an economic development purpose for us to approve it, and that was why I mentioned the jobs created and the investment in property.
Okay, thank you. Additional discussion? Crusher, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Moving on to the Police Department. As we noted earlier, Nicholas Peters has been hired as a full-time officer on March 21st, replacing the retirement, retiring Officer Shock. Nicholas is a Sandusky High graduate and served four years in the United States Marine Corps. Welcome aboard to Nicholas. Also, the annual awards banquet was held on March 18th. Congratulations to Officer Evan Eastep for being named Officer of the Year for 2018, and thanks to all of the citizens and officers that received awards for your dedication and commitment to the community. It was an honor to be there along with several Commissioners. Moving on to the Fire Department. The Sandusky Fire Department continued to serve the community through helping with various organizations, including OGO, in which they impacted approximately 500 people, helping with the St. Mary's Christmas Eve, serving approximately 400 people, and Chief Wilcox and Fire Marshal Rocker delivered meals on wheels for the Erie County Senior Center. In addition, the chefs helped cook and deliver lunches for the individuals that visited the senior center. For finance, the city received recognition from the State of Ohio House of Representatives for its recent certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the GFOA. The city would like to thank Representative Steve Arnn for sponsoring this accolade. Also, for public works, completion of concrete, eh, completion of concrete work on Meg Street Pier is expected to resume at the beginning of April. And for Big Island Water Works, emergency work up day, the two sodium hypochlorite tanks have been replaced and will be fully operational this week. And a reminder that the yard waste program will run from April 1st to December 31st. Residents who experience issues with their waste being picked up can contact Republic Waste Services of Sandusky at 419-626-2454. Again, that's 419-626-2454. Moving on to the Planning Department, RFPs and RFQs. The following RFQs, which is request for qualifications and request for proposals, or RFP, are issued and due next month. The first is the High Cancock Walk Wayne Initiative. The Sandusky Public Arts and Culture Commission, whose mission is to promote cultural and economic vitality in Sandusky by integrating the work of artists into public spaces, is seeking proposals from qualified artists or teams of artists to create temporary site-specific outdoor installations in conjunction with the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiatives, High Kane and Walk Wayne events. Responses are due by April 3rd, 2019. Also, temporary transit shelter murals. The Sandusky Parts, Public Arts and Culture Commission is seeking qualified artists or teams of artists to create temporary artworks that will be installed on the Sandusky Transit System bus shelters, with responses due by April 17th, 2019. And bike share. The Planning Department has drafted and intends to issue an RFP to request proposals for a bike share system. The city and Lake Erie Shores and Islands Visitor Bureau are looking for a company or organization to run a bike share system that enhances the community and visitor environment by providing affordable, efficient, environmentally friendly dockless bike share program that complements existing public transportation, provides residents and visitors a healthy and convenient way to move around the city. Responses are due by April 15th, 2019. Also, Greyhound Bus Lines will begin their local bus stop to the Sandusky Transit System Facility located at 1230 North Depot Street on April 1st. The bus will be making stops four times per day, seven days a week. This will make connecting throughout our area easier for city residents as well as for visitors by having Amtrak, Greyhound, and STS all using the same facility to pick up and drop off passengers. Additionally, a new yellow line will start running on April 1st, 2019. This route will make five stops, including Downtown Transit Hub, Cedar Point Dorms, Breakers Express, Castaway Bay, and the Cedar Point Sports Center. This is currently scheduled to run for six months and will be evaluated in the fall for possible expansion. The yellow line will run seven days from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled Wednesday, March 27th, at 4:30 p.m. in the first-floor conference room. The regular zoning appeals meeting will be scheduled April 18th at 4:30 p.m. in the first-floor conference room, and a landmark commission meeting is scheduled for April 17th at 4:30 p.m. in the first-floor conference room. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I may have to answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Poole.
Yes, with regard to art at the bus stops, would you just ensure that they take into consideration whatever they put on there, that those Clearview shelters are safety represented?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it doesn't disrupt that. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments for the City Manager? No, not, not, no, ma'am. Thank you. This is for the Commissioners. If there are no additional questions or comments from the Commissioners in return to old business, anyone, does anyone have any items of old business? Any items of new business? I do need to ask for a motion to adjourn hearing on May 13 to hear a petition for the vacation of a 20-foot alley located between 1620 and 1631 Cleveland Road. Someone care to make such a motion?
Someone? Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. All the favorists, if you can, by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Hearing is set. Additional items of new business? Then we will turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the Commission on any Ivy City business? Please give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts.
I'm Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I went to a meeting over the Jackson Street Pier on a zoning, and I'm not quite clear what is going on with the zoning, and I was wondering if someone could explain that to me, and that was the first time we saw some designs down there. That's a pretty big building. I'd like to have the full measurements of that building down there, and it looks like FEMA is okay with what's going down there, as long as the flooding is under control with materials and the pier is stabilized, and that looks like a lot of money going into that pier for something like that, to make sure that building doesn't get flooded out and the pier doesn't, it, the pier will drain properly. You get one storm, and that's going to be it for down there. I, I can't imagine putting a building down there with that kind of thing going on with the storms and everything, getting that all wet down there. I just don't understand that, because you look at Lions Park and Shoreline and what's happening there to those two parks. I just would like some explanation. So, the, get this out here to the people, so they know what's going on. It looks like, is the pier, is the, work on the pier stopped because of this zoning issue, or what? What's going on down there?
Why don't you conclude your remarks?
I'm concluded.
We will, we will perhaps talk about that a little bit. Matter, of course, is currently in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals. The request is for a variance of the city's requirement that is, in addition to what FEMA requires, the city's requirement is normally that it be two feet above the FEMA level. That has frequently been waived or variance granted, city wanting properties that are close to the water like that. And as you correctly stated, the building is built of FEMA-compliant materials so that it is able to withstand flood matters currently and still is before the BZA. I don't think it's for us to resolve that issue here, but that's the background.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the Commission?
Catherine Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. I'm just piggybacking off of hers. That was an interesting meeting. My concern is, this building has turned from being a building that could be opened up for festivals and the farmer's market and stuff with a men's and women's restroom, and has turned into a men's and women's restroom, a janitorial, a kitchen, and for some reason, a powder room, which would be interesting to see what that turns into when it's finished. Now it's been turned to face the lake for lake viewing, which you don't have lake viewing back there. If you come onto the pier, you would know that. We already know, everyone knew that that was a flood zone. The engineer, Mr. Pesta, everyone knew that was a flood zone, and that should have been taken into consideration where they were going to put this building. Ms. Angie stated that she, oh, there you are. She said that it can't be moved, the building can't be moved farther north because the public didn't want that. Well, the public didn't want the building in the first place, but the only reason you can't move it farther north is going to be in your concert venue. There's going to be a four-and-a-half-foot-tall pile of dirt, the grassy knoll, from the east side to almost the west side of that pier. You're not going to see the lake from the street at all. This, I think, is when down the road, if it becomes not used as we all think that it might be, I think it could be very easily turned into a small cafe or a restaurant, but it's being turned north to face the concert venue. That's the only reason. And if you're not going to do it right, don't do it. We don't need another Surf's Up situation where, in the future, there's been so much disintegration, every time we have a 40-plus mile-an-hour winds, horizontal snow, driving rain, and wind that tears the roofs off of these buildings downtown. That's all happened in the last 40 months, 14 months. It happens over and over. You're on a lake, it can happen again. We don't want future Commissioners and future taxpayers paying to repair this building over and over again because it wasn't done right, and going, what were you thinking? And then spending another 10 years deciding if they're going to tear it down. You could easily flip the whole design of the pier and put it on the other corner and still have what you want down there. You'd have your concert venue, you have the bus turnaround, you'd have the parking at the north end, and just flip it, because the west side of that pier sits higher and it doesn't flood as much and as easily as where it did when the food trucks. I can see down the road, the city making a contract with a vendor to come down there and sell food out of there during concerts, during festivals. And I know that the public would love to see a certain barbecue venue back down in there, so, thank you.
Ms. Carter. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission? On city items?
Let's do the items.
On city items.
For city items? Okay, this is a city item. A couple months ago, Joan Chaney-Burden, 2024 Foxborough Circle, a couple, about a